I'd like to call the city of Muskegon City Commission meeting to order for January 25th, 2011. I'd like to welcome Pastor Tim Cross from the Living Word Church to lead us in prayer to be followed by the pledge. Pastor?
Let's bow our heads, please. Father, we just come before you in the precious name of Jesus. Father, as I was just meditating on what to pray today, I remembered how you appeared to Solomon and asked Solomon what you could do for him. And Solomon looked up and said, "Father, I need you to give me wisdom to come out and go before these great people." Father, I pray for this city commission. I pray that you would give them wisdom. You would grant them wisdom from above. Your help, Heavenly Father, so that they can deal with the issues before them, the challenges before them, the things that affects this city. We ask for heavenly wisdom. Father, you said in your word that if any man lacks wisdom, he can ask of you, and you would give it to them liberally. So, Father, I ask you to pour out wisdom upon them and help them in the decisions that they have to make. And, Father, especially as well, just hearing the news reports of police officers being killed and shot throughout this nation. Father, I pray over our police officers here in Muskegon. Father, I pray for your protection over them. Father, I pray that literally angels would be round about them, protecting and delivering them from all evil and harm. You would protect them as they're out in their cruisers, as they pull people over or deal with issues. Father, we don't want to see that come to our police force here. And, Father, we thank you for your protection, and we thank you for your help. That, Father, you are the one that is ever-present to help in the difficult places of life. And, Father, if there are difficult issues that our city has to deal with, Father, we know that you are there to help, to give wisdom and to give aid as we look to you. And, Father, we thank you for it, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much, and we appreciate all that you do for the community. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Here.
Commissioner Carter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Here.
Commissioner Spataro?
Here.
Mayor Wilmington?
Here.
Commissioner Waringo?
Here.
Thank you. May we have the consent agenda read, please?
Approval of minutes, city clerk. Summary request: To approve minutes for the January 10th Commission Works Session Meeting and the January 11th City Commission Meeting. Staff recommendation: Approval of the minutes. Amend city ordinance 54-264: Purchase/Consumption of Alcoholic Beverages by Minors; Public Safety. Summary request: The Director of Public Safety is requesting the city commission to adopt the amended ordinance. The amended language will bring our ordinance into compliance with state law MCL 436.1703. Staff recommendation: Approval of the amended ordinance. Sell of the vacant, unbuildable lot at 163 West Clay; Planning Economic Development. Summary request: Request to sell the vacant, unbuildable lot at 163 West Clay to Lorre Orneless at 165 West Clay. Staff recommendation: Approval of the property sale.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioners, you've heard the consent agenda read. Is there any items you'd like to have removed for further discussion? Commissioner Carter?
Seeing none, I move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Carter, supported by Commissioner Spataro. Do you approve the consent agenda as read? Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Before we get to new business, I want to make a comment that over the last few weeks or months, the city staff has been getting some phone calls in regards to the production of this show on Comcast Cable. And I want you to know that if you're having difficulty either with the picture or with the sound, that we'd like for you to call DSE Enterprises, which produces the show. That number is (231) 737-0066. Or if you prefer to email, it's ds-enterprises(s)with an s@comcast.net. And in further shows, that message will be streamlined at either the beginning or the end, or possibly both, so that you can contact those folks. They're doing their best to make sure that it's not an ongoing problem, but it seems that many of the problems are right with Comcast, and we know that's an 888 number for you to call. So, we're trying to bring it to a local level so that we can get those issues taken care of. Thank you. New business, please.
Second Quarter 2010-2011 Budget Reforecast Finance. Summary request: At this time, staff is transmitting the second quarter 2010-2011 budget reforecast, which outlines proposed changes to the original budget that have come about as a result of changes in policy priorities, labor contracts, updated economic conditions, or other factors. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Your Honor, so we may begin discussion, I would move that we approve the second quarter 2010-2011 budget reforecast.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Waringo, to approve the second quarter 2010-2011 budget reforecast. Mr. Paul, welcome.
Just a real brief overview. This is the second, or the midpoint of our new fiscal year, which goes from July 1st now to June 30th. Overall, things are where we expected when we changed fiscal years. Actually, we're doing a little better. Revenue so far, about a half million dollars higher than we originally budgeted, and that's all in the income tax category. So far, in the new fiscal year, income tax revenues have been coming in at a pace that exceeds what our original budget estimate was. So, we're confident that we can get six and a half million dollars as opposed to six million dollars, which was the original budget. On the expenditure side, we're actually two million dollars over where we thought we'd be at this point, but that's not bad news because we knew it's a planned over expenditure. Earlier in this fiscal year, I think in September, the commission approved the payoff of some long-term debts, as well as an additional payment to the city's pension system. So, even though we're two million dollars over on expenditures, we planned it to be that way at this point. So, overall, our fund balance with the fiscal year change and with the budget to where it's at right now is still healthy, and, you know, things are looking good.
Thank you.
But we have a lot of challenge in the head.
Thank you for the qualifier. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. One of the challenges we're likely to face is a cut in state revenue sharing. I mean, the legislature's already voted to double the size of the deficit, and they haven't cut spending yet, so...
How prepared are we to take a 5% to 10% revenue sharing cut?
You know, surprisingly, our revenue sharing payments, probably the last three in a row, have been higher than we thought they'd be. So, you know, that shows a little more economic activity in the state. People are buying things. Sales taxes are up. So, we could absorb some decrease because of that, but if it's only 5% or 10%, I'd be agree to sigh relief, frankly. You know, I think longer term, there's a lot more at risk than that. But, you know, 5% or 10%, we could manage our way with that. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
For the benefit of the listening audience, I think it's important to know that despite the tough financial times and everything that we've been facing as a community, the state organizations that evaluate community financing rate the city of Muskegon in the top five in the state of Michigan. And I think I heard last year, I saw one report that even put us in the top three. So, even though we're having difficult financial challenges, we are in as good or better shape than most communities in the state of Michigan, and I think that's something we can be proud of and thank Mr. Paul for his guidance in helping us get there.
Thank you. Any other comments? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item B, please.
Concurrent for the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish the Following Public Safety 455 Amity and 741 South Gettys Street. Summary request: This is to request that the city commission concur with the findings of the Housing Board of Appeals that the structures are unsafe, substandard, a public nuisance, and that they be demolished within 30 days. It is further requested that administration be directed to obtain bids for the demolition of the structures and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized and directed to execute a contract for demolition with the lowest responsible bidder. Staff recommendation: To concur with the Housing Board of Appeals' decision to demolish.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that's here to speak on either one of these properties? Which property?
741 Gettys.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here for 455 Amity? Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 455 Amity.
Support. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 455 Amity. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, in order to facilitate discussion, I would move that we concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 741 South Gettys.
Second. It's been moved by Commissioner Spataro, supported by Vice Mayor Galvin, to concur with the Housing Board of Appeals Notice in Order to Demolish 741 South Gettys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This case came before the Housing Board of Appeals in October 2010. I take it back. Housing Board of Appeals in May 2010. It was tabled until September 2010. The owners were Jennifer Witham and Robert Witham. Ms. Kleinstecker has power of attorney in behalf of Mr. Witham, who's currently in prison. There was a divorce proceeding underway, so the board delayed any further review or action of the Housing Board of Appeals until October. The case returned then. We brought it back extra to the Housing Board of Appeals in November of last year. Ms. Kleinstecker was not present at the time the case was called, but came in shortly afterwards, so the board did declare it. I believe you were meeting somebody outside. It was a potential buyer.
Yes.
She was meeting supposedly a potential buyer in the parking lot for the property. Based upon the fact that we've delayed this and tried to work with the owners, there's not been any real progress on the case. Certainly, the board recommended to this body to be declared substandard and a nuisance.
All right. Thank you. I need for you to give your name and address, please.
Loretta Kleinstecker. I live at 24 Matthews Court, northeast, Grand Rapids, Michigan, 409-505. I don't know what to say. I did get contractors. I did have a contractor come in to look at the house, to get the written estimate for the house, but he was denied entry to get the written estimate for the city. Now, we have an electrician that is trying to get in there, too. We're willing to get this fixed. There's one broken window. The wife was, ex-wife now, she's the one that done all this demolition to the house. She cut the wires to the house. Pipe froze, and one pipe broke. That pipe has been fixed. There is a brand-new sink in the house. There is brand-new cupboards in the house. We did deliver them all in there. As a matter of fact, there's more than enough cupboards because there's like 13 more sitting in the garage. We're trying to get this done, but we're coming in, we're butting heads because we're not getting the consent for the contractors to go in, to get the estimates, so they can present them to the city and say, "This is what time, how long it's going to take." The heating and cooling guy did tell me how much it's going to take to fix, you know, because you guys want something down the chimney. Hundred hours. I can afford the hundred hours, plus the labor. You know, and these are licensed contractors. They're willing to do this, but they gotta have the consent to go in there and do the estimates. We can get it done. We can get it done within two months and take the boards off the windows.
Who do they need to get the consent from?
Don. Don, Steve is the heating and cooling gentleman. He had came to Muskegon, and he had talked to Don.
Don?
Yeah. LeBrans.
Okay.
The guy upstairs.
Okay. Yeah, please.
Once a case is assigned out to this body, at that point, we stop doing any further processing with it. We don't allow owners to go in and so forth. And we don't want to work actively with owners until there's some determination by this body as to what's going to happen with the property. At some point, we just have to say, "Stop." Sometimes there's a lag, as there was in this case, before it comes to you. Obviously, cases are assigned out, and the best we can get them out. But once we assign a case and put it on the agenda, at that point, we stop working with folks because we're going to bring it through you for determination. That's the way we've operated for some time now. So, that's why, when you say Don will let you in, I talked to Ms. Kleinstecker just before the meeting. That's why we stop the process at that point because it's Don bringing it before you. It's kind of the final step, so...
All right. Thank you. I thought that something to do with ownership and how that was all transparent. So, now, for me, let me back up, Chief. We started with this in May 10th, May of 2010.
Correct.
And it did not really come before the Housing Board of Appeals until November.
We delayed it until November because of a pending divorce situation, and again, Ms. Kleinstecker has power of attorney in behalf of her brother, so, yes.
So, I'm assuming that her brother, through the divorce, has the property?
I believe he does now. That was part of that delay process that we delayed it, yes.
You guys have this to deal with.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Shepherd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question. What is your purpose for this house? What are your plans?
Our purpose is to finish up the brand-new wiring and get somebody respectable in there. Sell the house, and I got another potential buyer. Sell the house to a good family. I mean, this is a humongous old house. I mean, the floor structures are sound. Walls are sound. Everything's sound. The only thing they want to demolish it for is because the wife, the ex-wife, had gone in there and cut the wiring, the brand-new wiring that went into the fuse box. She cut it short of the floor.
Yeah. That house has really sat there for a long, long time.
My brother just bought it in 2009, January 2009.
Yeah. It was empty then, and now.
Yeah.
And it's been empty for...
It was a HUD house. He bought it from HUD.
It was empty for about four years, as far as I know. And because I passed there all the time, what make it so dangerous is that it sits not in front of anything. It sits in the wood, like, and there's no other houses near it. And I've watched that house just go down, and I felt, at one while, it looked all right, but then all of a sudden, it just went down, and it's really bad.
It's because the city had us board it back up. They had us board it because one broken window, and because of the wiring, we didn't want nobody vandalizing, breaking more windows. Because my brother just spent a fortune for brand-new windows in there. All thermal pane windows on the lower level.
So, if you do the house, you're planning on renting it out or selling it?
Renting it or selling it, whichever. My brother has gave me consent to do both. So, if I sell it, then it will go to a family that has children, because it is a big house. It's not a five-bedroom anymore. My brother made it into a four-bedroom now. So, but it is a humongous house, even like a foster family, a family that has foster children. That'd be a great place right there because it's all fenced in, you know? But, you know, I know.
Commissioner Carter?
A question for you. Say you can have it fixed within 60 days, but yet you haven't had anybody go in there and look at it. How do you know you can afford it?
We've had one person. The heating.
How do you know when everybody gets through in there, you have the money to fix it? That's my question, if nobody's been in there.
I have the money, and I have a statement from Social Security. They're holding my brother's $6,077 that I have to go pick up. He gets Social Security, and he, before he went to prison, he had a lump sum coming, so they're releasing that. And then my husband and I, we own our own business, so...
Commissioner Spataro?
Thank you. Well, you know, again, my concern is, as with Commissioner Shepherd, this house has been empty for quite a while, and I understand where your brother's ownership interest came into play here, but when our housing inspector, Henry Feltonowski, looks like this is dated March 4th, there was an interior inspection done, and based on that interior inspection, the estimated cost of repair was roughly $25,000.
Yes, I seen that. But that was where the ex-wife had tore off the wallpaper on the wall.
Well, no, that included...
The electrical...
I mean, some of it is, some of it on here is cosmetic, but most of this stuff is pretty serious stuff. It has to do with, apparently, the furnace and ductwork is not in usable condition.
No, that's incorrect.
Well, I'm going by what our inspector said. Now, I assume that if that's no longer correct, permits are pulled for that work to be done. There, I mean, again, there's 16 items on this list. I'm not going to go all the way through it. But we would, you know, I would suggest that we concur and go through that normal appeals process. If there's the resources to do the work necessary to bring this house up to code, that should not create an undue hardship.
Any other questions, commissioners? Any other comments? Do you understand what the appeal process is?
Yeah, and the gentleman here explained it to me, but it's going to cost me $5,000 for an appeal.
It's...
You realize you're taking away the money that's going to be fixing the house?
We...
So, you're putting people in hardship. You're not helping.
We deal with this almost on a monthly basis, and, yeah, we understand completely, but we also understand that the house has been empty for four, three, four years. Two of the years that your brother has had part-ownership in this, and this is a way for the city to protect the rest of the neighbors in the neighborhood, and making certain that the owner of the house, if they're committed to doing it, will put $5,000 up. You indicated it sounded like you had some dollars that would be available to put up, and you can discuss that with the judge if, in fact, this is to be concurred with.
But let me correct you on that, Mayor. My brother owned it two years now. One year unoccupied from March till now.
Okay. So, you're saying that either he or his ex-wife...
Yes, they lived there.
Okay. All right. I stand corrected. Any other discussion, commissioners? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Shepherd?
What is the motion?
To concur with the Housing Board of Appeals.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. AMC, please.
MERS Healthcare Savings Program HCSP Agreement for Command Officers Finance. Summary request: A new contract with police command officers was recently settled through arbitration. One provision of the new contract, not arbitrated, calls for implementation of the MERS Healthcare Savings Program. Several other city employee groups already have this program in place. Since the contract was arbitrated and is not brought to the commission for approval, it is necessary to separately approve the MERS HCSP agreement. Staff recommendation: Approval.
Thank you. Mr. Paul?
Commissioners, this is a, as you know, the command contract has been settled, and one of the pieces of that command contract is the establishment of the healthcare savings program for command officers, currently non-union, DPW, FIRE, et cetera. And most groups now have this program in place. Since the contract doesn't come to you for approval, we do need to approve this contract for MERS, however, or this agreement, so that's why it's being brought to you.
Thank you. Commissioner Spataro?
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor, go.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move that we approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Agreement to Command Officers.
Support. It's been moved by Vice Mayor Galvin, supported by Commissioner Carter, to approve the MERS Healthcare Savings Program Agreement for Command Officers. Is there any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Mayor Wilmington?
Yes.
Commissioner Waringo?
Yes.
Commissioner Wiesniewski?
Yes.
Commissioner Carter?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Galvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Shepherd?
Yes.
Commissioner Spataro?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Is there any other business, commissioners? Is there anyone in, pardon me, Commissioner Spataro?
Well, I just wanted, I mean, there's been a couple articles in the paper. I just wanted to thank all the staff for the materials that were provided for our goal-setting session on Friday. I thought they did their usual excellent job, and hopefully, they found it useful. I certainly found it useful and productive, and I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Support. Any other business? Is there anyone in the audience that would care to address the commission tonight? Please step forward and give your name and address.
Linda Conley.
Up at the mic, please. Thank you.
Linda Conley, 1446 Montgomery, Muskegon, Michigan, 409-441. I am here about our alleys being plowed. I have a special-needs van that I tore up pretty good when I got stuck in the alley the other night. Yes. I parked on the road, left the officer a letter saying why I couldn't get in the alley with my van. He gave me a ticket anyways. Our alleys are not being plowed. We cannot park on the road. We do not have driveways in the front. The damage I've done on my van, I don't know. I have to take it in. I have two special-needs children for that van, and I am very angry. I call the city, and they tell us the roads are their first priority. I understand this, but for us people that live with the alleys where we have to park in the back, we need our alleys plowed.
Amen.
And I am very angry with the city because we're whatever on the list, for us to tear our vehicles up trying to get in and out of there, and then get tickets anyways when we need the officer's number, our letters, saying we can't get in there. And I'm very angry with this, and a lot of the neighbors are also, and I want to know what can be done about this.
Well, would you like to respond to that, Commissioner?
Yes. Ma'am, I would love to agree with you. I have the same problem. As a matter of fact, trying to get out tonight, I had enough time trying to get out because it's tough. We can't park on the street. We can't park on the terrace. We have to go in and out of the alleys. I found out a few years ago, there's about five miles of alleys that needs to be and We can't park on the terrace. We have to go in and out of the alleys. I found out a few years ago, there's about five miles of alleys that needs to be and has to be plowed in order to accommodate citizens. So I agree with you 100%. We've got to do something about that, and the next thing is, is that if there was an emergency in my block...
Exactly.
The police couldn't get through there, the ambulance, the fire, nobody could get through there, because it's devastated.
Exactly.
And the snow is up real tall, so it's just something we do have to concentrate on and make sure we make it better for our citizens.
My van has to be on call at all times, those children at school.
I thank you for bringing...
And now I have to set, I have to put it in the shop, and I can't pay for it, and I don't know what I'm going to do, because of what I, because I had to rock it so bad and it overheated, and luckily, a man came out and helped me get it out, but I've done damage trying to get in and out of that alley.
I understand 100%, and I have the same problem, and there needs to be some answers to that.
There's got to be some answer to this.
There's got to be plowed, certain portions. There's no other way.
Commissioner Carter?
When we had our budget adjusted, I think, a year ago last year, that was one of the things we made a point to save some money to do, was I think it was to cut down the alley. But I know one thing that we did look at doing was repealing the 2 o'clock, because if I'm not mistaken, some, I'm trying to recall now, I could be wrong, somebody said some numbers that they really don't plow a lot of times, the side streets at 2 o'clock in the morning, like in the old days, I mean, they just plowed any time. So the 2 o'clock cutoff in the morning is not really the way it used to be. I don't know, am I memorizing, remembering this wrong to assert, am I remembering it wrong?
No, I don't think so. I think there's discussion about the time, but that was not changed.
No, I know, I know.
The timing was not changing, and I think there's some people that feel that there's not a need for those time restrictions any longer, but I guess I would beg to differ that we, if we do need those restrictions, so that when we do need to plow during those times, the cars are on the street during those times. And I can tell you, more recently, when we were in the side streets, we're calling the districts, over the last couple of weeks, we were plowing in the middle of the night, because that's when we could get to the side streets.
If that, but I do recall that, right? That's good. I think one or two things need to happen. We either should look at something about the 2 o'clock, or we, because we can't afford to do the alleys like we used to, we just don't have the funds. If I'm not mistaken, that was part of what we talked about in our budget cutting.
Right. What's actually happened with the alley plowing is that the number of alleys that we're plowing have increased over the time. There's a number of alleys, and I'm not sure about this one, but there's a number of alleys that we did not plow many years ago, that we, as people asked us to plow them, we added them to the list, and we started plowing them. And now, we continue to do that, but as the lady said, the, our policy or practice is that we don't plow those alleys until the streets are plowed, so we can do the streets. But generally speaking, after a snow of a month, we're able to get into those alleys by the next day, and that's our goal, and that's what we've been able to accomplish. I know, as of last week, that's all we did.
Excuse me, but that is not true. Our alley, I dug $10 and asked a guy to plow from my driveway out. They have not plowed at all this year, except for when I called the last, that last week when I got stuck so bad when that storm came in. Otherwise, they have never touched our alley yet this year.
And that, and there's a number of alleys that we do not plow, because people have not asked us in the past to plow those alleys.
Why do we have to ask? We have to park at them, we have to park at them, we have no driveways in the front.
There used to be a time when they didn't plow the alleys, right? And we still have a number of private citizens that plow their own alleys.
Then I thought we should be able to park on the road and not get tickets.
Because we cannot get to them as quickly as they would like. And we have a, we have a development in our city that plows their own streets, and their city streets, because we're not getting, we don't get to those streets as quickly as they would like.
Have you seen our, excuse me, have you seen our city street, our street, side roads the way they plow? They leave furrows like this. We have to plow through these furrows on the corners.
I, I, can we put this on the next work session? Talk about it?
I would suggest.
I was going to ask the same thing. It seems to me that the handful of alleys that we plow were primarily ones where the facing street was, like the Lathan Avenues and the Apple Avenues, where there are sections where there's no, there's no, there's really no way to park on the terrace, there's really no access to the properties except for the alley, but that's fairly limited, and we might, as Commissioner Carter has indicated, look at that policy, because, you know, there may be some hardship situations we want to look at, and there may be, there may be some alleys that we're currently plowing that maybe don't need to be on the list anymore.
That's right.
So it bears looking at, because it's been a while.
I would, I would agree with you in terms of the handful, as you said, the handful, but that's increased. We've added, over the years, more and more alleys that we plow.
And there may be some that need to come off that list, because they're going to shoot me, but it seems to me, two of the alleys that we did were the ones between Clay and Webster and Webster and Muskegon, because that was a four, well, eight lanes of business route, and it is no longer eight lanes of business route, so.
We'll add it to the list, and the Director of Public Works will be available, so you can talk more intelligently then.
So, for your information, Ms. Conley, thank you for coming forward with that, and the, that work session, if you're interested in attending, will be February 7th, I believe it is, and it's 5:30 in this, in the chambers here. If you want to attend the work session where this will be discussed further, it will be on February 7th at 5:30. Here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone else that would care to address the commission tonight?
I have a question for the man here on that last item. We have GPS transponders on our plows now, right?
On most, most of our vehicles.
Right, so, I mean, we can verify, I mean, we're not relying on somebody telling us what they did, we can verify where the trucks actually went.
Not necessarily on an alley, because we don't plow those with plow trucks, we plow those with pickup trucks.
Oh, okay, all right, thanks. I wasn't sure.
As most of those alleys do not, they're not our high-line division, so.
Okay, thanks.